Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners call this public hearing to order. I'll read the notice, the Board of Commissioners, City of Mount Juliet will conduct a public hearing to consider the following on July 28th at 6:15 at City Hall located at 2425 North Mount Juliet Road. We got a single item which is an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of existing right of way on Second Avenue and acceptance of a portion of the Mount Juliet Church of Christ property located at 1940 North Mount Juliet Road, map 55 parcel 95. If there's anyone would like to come forward and give a comment to the Board of Commissioners on this item, I'd invite you to do so.
I'm with the Mount, I'm Tim Martin with the Mount Juliet Church of Christ and the education minister there. And I just, if there's any questions on that thing or anything, I'm here to explain it, but hopefully maybe you understand what we're trying to do.
I just have to ask you for your name and address.
Tim Martin, 819 Muskogee Way, Mount Juliet.
Okay.
And so that's really, I didn't know if this was a time for those questions or if it was a time to wait till the item came up.
What we'll do if we have any questions when the item comes up, if anybody from the board does, we may, we may call you, reserve the right to call you back up, but um.
Sounds good.
At this point, we're just taking comments.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else to have a comment on the item? All right, seeing none, we'll adjourn the public hearing and reconvene for our regular meeting at 6:30. [applause] I'll call this meeting to order. Today is July 28th and we are here for the, our meeting, our regularly scheduled meeting. We do have a quorum present, so we'll proceed with conducting of our business here. Our first item is to set the agenda. Is there any objections to setting the agenda as published? All right, hearing none, the agenda is set. We have a 67-page packet, just one item on unfinished business, and then six other items. Only three of those are actual, I guess, traditional agenda items because we got two appointments and one discussion item on there, so that's half of our new business agenda. And the next thing is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Call on our city manager, Mr. Kenny Martin, would you please lead us in the invocation and pledge?
Yes, sir. Everybody join me and bow your hips, please. Dear Lord, your word says that all things work together for the good of those who love you, to those who are called according to your purpose. God, we love you and we gather to carry out the tasks that you have given us to fulfill our purpose. I pray that you intervene in this meeting, let it work for our good and for the good of the community. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes. We have one set from July 14th. Have a motion, motion in second, any questions, comments, discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor of the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? It passes with a vote of four in the affirmative and with one extension. Next item is our citizen comments. This is your opportunity, if you want to address the Board of Commissioners, we just ask you to come forward, give your name and address for the record at the podium. You'll be recognized for three minutes. The board's under no obligations to answer questions from the floor, but we'll do our best to address anything that comes up, so anybody wishing to address us, here is, the floor is open. All right, we're seeing none, we'll close citizen comments and I'll recognize Commissioner Art Giles for his comments. You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see those who've come out tonight. And I also want to bring attention that, that school is starting on Friday, if I'm not mistaken. So we need to be careful and remember that the students are going to be out, kids, and we sure want to be mindful and thankful of our teachers who, who really sacrifice a lot for the children. My wife was in the system for many years and was a principal for many years. And it's that time of year, she and I talk about it and think about the exciting times to go back and be able to see the new students and that type of thing. So anyway, keep everybody in your, them in your thoughts and prayers this week. I also want to thank PD, I was able to tour the new facility. Of course, it's not ready yet, but it's incredible. It's just, I was telling my wife, and I'm so thankful that we live in a city that we put our, our first responders, we, we, a lot of our budget is that and it should be. And, you know, we live in a safe city and I was just so impressed to see this new police station and what it's going to offer and what it's going to do for us. It just makes me proud to live in Mount Juliet and see what we do for our citizens. So thank you. And Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. We'll recognize Vice Mayor Trevette for his comments.
Thanks, Mayor, and obviously thanks for everybody coming out here tonight, also the students, also the folks that are online. It's always great to see local folks just getting involved, see what's going on with their government. Just want to kind of reiterate a couple of things. The Commissioner Giles also did say, man, Facebook this week and last week has been great when you start seeing all the MJPDs. It's amazing the amount of traffic that we have coming through our city and our officers are on it. So if you're looking for a way to get out of the city other than your vehicle, Mount Juliet will help you get out of there. So it's great, they've done some good stuff by cleaning our roads up from other cities along with other counties, so it's great that they are being proactive. And so thank the officers that are continuously keeping our streets safe. MJ Fire, I'll tell you, there was a lot of red lights in our community the other night. So it's always great that they come in fast, taking care of our residents. There was late nights when, you know, we start getting those, you know, those fire smells in our homes and it's unfortunate for, for these families, sometimes they're being displaced or just having to be disrupted through that week, but it's good that, that we didn't have any loss of life in our community this week, especially with that house on fire there. So thank you to you and your team out there, sir, for making sure that we're safe when we go to bed at night. So with that, just again, even though schools are starting back, just remind our students that our new drivers heading into school, school buses, I brought it up last meeting, follow the laws, you know, MJPD, they're going to be looking out for drivers that are not obeying the speed limit and also stopping at those nice stop signs that those school buses are putting out. So please be responsible and also be alert for these new students that are jumping off the school bus, heading into school and heading back home. So that's all I got, Mayor, so that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Now we'll recognize Commissioner Hefner, you were recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to welcome everybody that came out this evening, those watching on TV, both in-state and out-of-state, I think I've got some friends up in Michigan that tuned in, why, I don't know, they must be bored. But anyways, I wasn't here last meeting, I was, I was ill. I do want to thank Public Works and all the, those that were involved in the railroad crossing, that was tremendous job that you guys did, PD, everybody, and I know I'm missing a bunch, so appreciate all the city staff that was involved in getting that railroad fixed in a very timely fashion, it was a big undertaking. Also want to, we're going to talk about this later on this evening, I put it on the agenda as a discussion item. Not sure who was behind it, I suspect it might have been Mr. White, but I want to appreciate your efforts in getting that $25 million grant, federal grant, to go towards Central Pike Interchange and any and all that were involved in that as well, want to publicly thank you for that. Also, it is back to school, just be aware, kids walking to school, be mindful of that. Also, good reports coming in, sales tax, sales tax revenue is up from last year, so that's very encouraging, can't wait to, to review that in January to see how we're doing. I hope the, I hope the trend continues, so fingers crossed. And also with back to school, shop local. With that, that includes, concludes my report, thank you. Oh, one more thing, Kenny, I'm looking at you and I'm like, I know there's something I want to tell you. I'm looking for that wage study.
Yeah.
And I'm, every commission meeting, I'm going to remind you that I'm looking for that wage study, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. We'll recognize Commissioner Malley for your comments, recognized for five minutes.
Thank you. Again, thank you for everyone coming out and for the scout group, I always like to see the scouting groups. The construction on South Rutland Road where they're realigning the road that's supposed to be complete, I think Thursday's the last day because school starts Friday, so hopefully we're on target with that. Okay, got a thumbs up. So then Friday, South Rutland Road coming from the south, from Providence Trail down to Central Pike will be back open. A lot of school traffic goes through that road. Again, teachers start back in the morning, I'll be at Rutland welcoming, welcoming them back and students start back on Friday. And my next newsletter goes out on Friday, so that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll just take a moment to mention, we have Troop 934 with us. I know they are working very hard to get their citizenship in the community and communications. Is it one badge or two badges? Two, okay, so citizenship in the community and communications, so welcome. I don't know if anybody's got a speech prepared or anything for us. They ain't going to defer to the next meeting, I understand. But thank you for being here. I'll wrap up with my comments and just recognize our city manager for here, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, thanks everybody for coming out, it's good to see everybody that's here tonight and those watching at home, to the scouts, as we were talking before we started the meeting, the things you'll learn, I assume everybody's shooting for eagle, once you get your eagle, there's literally, once until you, I guess once you reach age 18, you can't get an eagle round, so it's very rare. There's presidents in this country that have actually said, one of the proudest moments was getting their eagle rank. So good to see you and for the parents that do all that hard work, thank you for what you do. I want to give a shout out to Matt and his team and all of Public Works. Matt and I talked about this years ago, even back when Mr. Barlow was here, the smartest people at the room are people like, are to be at those meetings, are people like Matt, he attends all of our meetings, GNRC, all those meetings, builds those relationships, and at any given time, the City of Mount Juliet probably has more grants and other things, projects on the list that you get from the state. So thank you Commissioners for supporting that and supporting the things you do. So Matt, to your team and everybody that's involved in that, thank you so much. To everybody that's worked in the heat recently, parks, Public Works, City Beautiful, police, fire, you name it, everybody knows how hot it's been, and so a lot of good stuff comes from HR and human resources about them staying cool. Thank you for all that you do through all this heat and all, the shop local, if something Commissioner Heffner said, we need more than anything, when you think of the teachers, think of shop local, when you think of all the city services, think of shop local. The numbers were up and we hope they stay up and we're going to do everything we can to, to work to increase those numbers as well. And the wage study Commissioner, absolutely, the only thing that's held us up a little bit on that is a lot of cities made changes this year and we have to go through a public information request, sometimes they get that data, which can take a little while, but I thank Ms. Emily who's working on that with HR, they're well into it. So thank you for staying diligent on that. And Mayor, that concludes my reports and comments.
Thank you, sir. That will move into our first item on the agenda, which is 9A, an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of the portion of the existing right of way of Second Avenue South and acceptance of the public right of way dedication from Mount Juliet Church of Christ, both located at 1940 North Mount Juliet Road, map 55 parcel 95. Motion in a second, the item is on the table. Commissioner Giles?
Yeah, are we, are we going to talk about this, this new one that's here? Because I want to say something about the Church of Christ, either before or after. Should I wait? Do we have to mend to accept this or what?
Yeah, just a motion to, to substitute would be appropriate.
Okay, do I need to make that motion?
Yeah, if you, if you'd like to.
Okay, then I make a motion to accept this in, in lieu of the other one.
Okay.
The ordinance.
So a motion to substitute the copy on the table here with, with what we were voted on first reading. And we have a second. So we're on, we're on the substitution, any comments on the substitution?
Yeah, I want to say something. I want to thank the Church of Christ, Mount Juliet Church of Christ again, I know I've said it many times up here, I'm sure I'll be saying it probably many times in the future, how much we appreciate what y'all are doing for the city in this right of way for the greenway, for the future greenway. And this new ordinance, what it does, the, the church has stepped up and said, we will give you the rest of that property all the way to the creek. And, and when I was the representative from this board years ago for, for BPAC, I told our members, I said, if you run into anybody from that congregation, please tell them how much the city appreciates it. And, and even then, since I've been chairman of it all of these years now, I still tell our people when we start talking about it once in a while, but thank y'all so, so much. And for, and I don't worship at this congregation, but that is a wonderful congregation and we appreciate what y'all do so, so much.
Any other comments on the substitution? Commissioner Heffner?
It's a clarification, are we reverting back to the original and discarding this new one? Or we're substituting the new one?
Substituting for the new, that's the motion.
Because I thought, I heard something different. Okay, I do have some questions. Is it, are we getting, so is a portion of the property, the bridge, sort of?
Like, is it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like 25% of it, is that correct?
I mean, on the, on the plot, it looks like about a quarter, I want, I want to say it was 128 square feet.
Because the property to the, the southwest of that bridge is owned by, I assume, whatever Telsey's last name is, that, that group, I assume.
Patel.
And then to the, yeah, Patel, and then to the, to the other side of the bridge, I'm not for sure who owns those two.
So I guess my question's for Public Works as it relates to that project, because I thought that there were some improvements, and I could be wrong because it's been
And I could be wrong because it's been years since that was talked about. But were there some improvements that they had to make to that bridge or that area for connectivity that were put on them?
Name and title?
Matthew White, Public Works Director. Yes, the development that he was mentioning Tulsi's group, they're required to build the greenway across that bridge and along the creek, along the church property. We, they will have to acquire the rest of that bridge to make that happen. But that this is the first step in acquiring this piece. And the development group will be responsible for acquiring the rest of the bridge.
Okay. So the city's, so the city's going to take it over initially and then we're going to make the, the improvements?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this right of way along the church property establishes that area for the greenway to go along the creek there. The development team will still have to acquire a portion of the bridge to get the greenway. The greenway will use the existing bridge there.
Okay. But it's, it's not active. Is it in need of repair that the city and taxpayers are going to have to cover before they get around to making the improvements? Because I don't think they broke ground over there.
No, they haven't broke ground. I, I believe the bridge is in good shape. I haven't, I haven't done an evaluation of it, but from my understanding, it's, it's in good shape for a pedestrian bridge.
Okay. All right. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the substitution?
And the valuation of that bridge should be the responsibility of the development.
Yeah.
Who takes charge of it so that we know, they know, and they can do whatever repairs needs to be done on that when they construct the greenway.
Yep.
All right. All in favor of substituting the copy that we've been presented here at the table with what was published? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We're back on the ordinance as once amended. Any other questions or comments? All right. All in favor of the ordinance as once amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That does pass. 10A, which is a resolution approving an agreement to the agreement between the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee and Kimberly Horn for bid and construction engineering and inspect CEI services for the Town Center Trail Phase Three project and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion second. It's on the table. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Passes vote of five to zero. 10B, which is a resolution approving the attachment to the master agreement between the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee and the Water Management Services LLC for Golden Bear Gateway Regional Pump Station and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That one passes two with unanimous vote. 10C, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a second modified agreement between block safety and the City of Mount Juliet Police Department. Got a motion second and third. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That also passes unanimously. The next item is 11A, which is the Real Estate Advisory Committee Commercial Real Estate, Real Estate Appraisal Appointment. I'm going to submit the name of Russell Parish to fill this role. All right. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. He is hereby appointed. The next appointment is a Real Estate Advisory Committee, Committee Board, well, member of the Board of Commissioners. Is there anyone that would like to volunteer? I heard Commissioner Giles. Is there anyone else? All right. Well, considering we got one, I'll make the, I'll make the motion to appoint Commissioner Giles. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any, all right, then Commissioner Giles, you are appointed. The last item is a discussion item, which is a transportation plan update for fiscal year 2025. Build Grant Integration. And this is under Commissioner Hefner's sponsorship. So, sir, I'll give you the floor.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, great news all around on this. So we, I had a lot of questions. I thought, all right, I had some. I said, might, might be better to just go ahead and knock it out in a workshop or put it on the agenda for tonight. So the first, the first question is that I have is the $25 million. Can you explain, or can you? Is this in lieu of the $25 million that the city has put up?
Yes, sir.
All right. Matthew White, Public Works Director again. No, this will not replace the city's contribution of 25 million. So let me give you a little backstory of why we applied for this. So two years ago, TDOT started releasing a 10-year plan every year. This 10-year plan has about 100 projects in it. And those projects are fully funded and the TDOT establishes what years those projects will be funded. Mount Juliet got three projects in the 10-year plan, the interchange, Central Pike widening and South Mount Juliet Road. The, the only other project that would be a TDOT project that didn't get in the 10-year plan is Lebanon Road widening project. But so TDOT reevaluates their 10-year plan every year and adds an additional year on to add additional projects. So when we got the three projects, myself and a lot of people were not happy about the timeline that was established for the interchange in 2031 is when construction will be funded. So talking to the mayor, he was like, what can we do to get TDOT to move it up a couple of years? So I talked to TDOT staff, kind of higher ups in TDOT. They really said, there's nothing you can do, but if you can get additional funding, that's not state funding on a project, that will entice them to move the project up. So I looked through many different types of grants that were out there. This particular grant, the build grant, it has to have a regional significance and it has to have an economic impact. And it was really the only project in Mount Juliet that really qualified for those two that would be justified, really. So I applied for the grant about a little over a year ago. The max award amount is 25 million. That's what we asked for. Unfortunately, we were only awarded 24,600,000. So the whole goal of applying for this grant is to move the project up. And so this grant has a stipulation that you have to start spending the money by 2029. So what I'm going to do is make an application to TDOT. So at the end of August, it's, the applications are due to make your case for projects in the 10-year plan, whether to move projects up or to add additional projects. And so I will be submitting an application to TDOT saying, basically, we, we got you this additional money. Can we, can you move the project up to at least 2029? So move it up two years, which is a big deal.
So I appreciate the background. So you said you weren't happy with, or you and the mayor were not happy with the 2031 start?
Yeah, because.
Wasn't that 25, the city, $25 million meant to fast track the interchange?
Yeah, that's what got it into the 10-year plan. It likely would not have been in the 10-year plan at all if it wasn't for our $25 million contribution.
So.
So it could, it, I, I say it expedited by getting it in the 10-year plan. Because if it wasn't in there, it's an unknown, unknown date sometime in the future.
Okay. So are we, are we restricted? We, why, why, and maybe this is a legal question. Why is it we can't take the $25 million that the city has already, I guess, committed?
Yeah.
And move that to another, move that to another road, like a Lebanon Road widening or to East Division Street? Why, why are we restricted? Why are we saying we can't move, can't touch that money?
Well, the 25 million we committed was part of the grant application and part of the justification for the.
Yeah, this grant.
Talk about the original 25 million. Talking about the Mount Juliet.
Yeah. This grant application that we applied for, we committed that 25 minute, or that you already committed. That was part of our application, which made it likely that we, I mean, it made them choose us because we're putting in so much money ourselves. So that's one of the factors of probably why we got selected for this. And so it was part of, part of our application. So we can't turn around and then say, hey, we're going to remove it at this point.
So we think another $25 million is going to move it up two years?
Yeah.
And do we have that in writing?
No, that's part, I've got to submit application to TDOT. We won't know till next spring when the new 10-year plan comes out, if they chose to move it up. So it's in TDOT's hand. If they don't want this additional money, then they'll just leave it at 2031. I don't see that happening, but.
No, we're saving the, we're saving TDOT $50 million at this point. What are they going to do with the other 25 million?
So that's the other thing. So that I wanted to discuss with you all is because we're saying, we're, we're technically saving TDOT $25 million. So they can then choose to add that to our only other product that's not in the 10-year plan, which is Lebanon Road widening.
Was that the other project you've mentioned?
Yeah.
Before?
That's the only TDOT project that's not in the 10-year plan in Mount Juliet.
So when you're looking at the federal grants, you mentioned Central Pike qualified and one other project qualified.
No, just the interchange qualified for this grant.
For the federal grant? Okay.
For this particular grant.
Okay.
Because it has a more regional significance. That the gap between Mount Juliet Road interchange and Hermitage is the largest gap on I-40 with no interchange. So that was one of our selling points in the grant application. Adding in a new interchange in between creates more impact for the region. It reduces traffic on the other interchange, Hermitage and Mount Juliet by adding this, this additional interchange. So, so another application I planned to submit after, it's up to you guys. I'll bring a resolution next meeting on this, the second application I'm going to submit to TDOT is to fund Lebanon Road widening in the 10-year plan. Because of this 25, 25 million we're saving on interchange project.
Okay. And so we'll wait to hear back from TDOT whether or not.
We won't know till next spring. So applications are due this month. They'll evaluate them from now until.
But it's not, doesn't sound like it's an automatic though.
No, it's not automatic.
So they can take the $25 million and use it some other city that we're saving them?
Yeah, they could. Yeah.
Okay.
But it's going to be my job to make a case for it to stay in, in Mount Juliet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, the most, the, the thing that will likely be approved is moving it up two years, which is a big deal. Two years is, it's a big deal. Because they said, we're not moving the years unless you provide us additional funding. And the city's not going to provide any additional funding. So we had to look for other sources.
This is with a meeting with TDOT? They said this? If you provided additional funding?
Yeah, if you want to move the project up sooner in the 10-year plan, then you've got to find some others.
Did they say how much it would take?
They didn't.
Okay.
Well, I just want to take this opportunity and thank you for your hard work on this. I know when we originally started talking about this, it was a slightly different grant or the grant had expired. That, that the other, I forget which it was Spring Hill or something had had some success with this. And I know it was, it was a lot of obstacles to overcome. It wasn't clear that TDOT was going to let us apply for a grant on one of their projects and got the green light on that. And really just, just some backstory on this. We were really only kind of hoping for a few million dollars to have some strings attached to it to help move us up. And Mr. White came back a few months ago and says, they want to know if we could get by with $22 million. And of course, my response was, yeah, well, we'll find a way to sacrifice with an extra 22 million, which would have probably been the biggest grant the city's ever gotten in one single project from a federal grant like that. But come back and was surprised to get the, I know somebody will say we didn't quite get everything. We didn't get the 25 million, but the 24.666750 in that. So that's a pretty good take on it. But just appreciate the work and everything it went into it. I also like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the Trump administration for streamlining the process. There were some things in this that initially was going to make this grant project a lot harder to do than justified on just need. So a lot of things were streamlined in the considerations for this, which really gave us the opportunity just to go improve the need for this and be able to be in consideration. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Matt, for everything you guys are doing and to making Mount Juliet great again, I guess. Is that the right way to, I guess, look at it? Anyways, so quick question. So the Lebanon Road, I mean, is there a projected number that's going to cost to help widen that? Obviously, you know, that amount of miles of roadway that's going to be widened. Is there a number that you guys have been working on behind the scenes?
Yeah, when we first, we first started designing this project, the Lebanon Road widening project, we did a cost assessment. That was back in 2019. So that cost estimate was around 25 million for engineering right of way and construction. Now, I, I would say it's probably around 35 now.
Okay.
I would have to do, as part of my application to TDOT, I'll have to do an updated cost assessment, try to project inflation. But yeah, around 35 million at this point.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious because I know obviously if you're going to take 25 million, if you can do the shell game, right?
Yeah.
Move it from TDOT. If it's going to cost an additional 10 million on top of it, how are you going to sell it? Obviously, that's a big concern there. But if anything, you know, it'd be something that we'd be able to help, you know, get those lanes in there. So.
Yeah. I mean, what would help is taking some voluntary contributions that have developments that have happened in that area and, and offer that money up as well, in addition to this grant we got for the interchange. That would probably go a long ways. And I, I did have, I had Shane calculate what those voluntary contributions are in that area. I have a sheet here. I'll hand it out.
Thank you.
If you'll see that, the yellow one that's highlighted is Maribella. That hasn't been approved yet. But I threw it in there just in case it does get approved. But at the bottom, you'll see without Maribella and with Maribella. So we're looking at $2.7 million of voluntary contributions that'll be coming in over the next probably 10 years. If Maribella did get approved, you're looking close, almost $6 million. So I guess what we'll have to decide, decide at the next BOC meeting, when I bring a resolution, is what amount you do want to contribute as part of our application. My recommendation would be at least 3 million. But that's totally up to you guys.
Commissioner Giles?
Yeah. And if I remember correctly, when you and I met with TDOT, that 3 million was put out there that, and they, they seemed very receptive to that.
Yeah.
So with that and plus this and plus what else could be, we may have a good chance of getting that widened a lot, lot sooner on a plan. You know, whether it's eight years, six years, 10 years. I mean, we get something.
I feel they get added. It'll get added to the, the last year. So you're still looking 10 years, but at least it's in a plan and it's going to get done. They, TDOT's promise, if it's in the 10-year plan, it's going to get done.
But they were very, I'm sorry, but they were very receptive and very, very nice to us when we met with them. And I was impressed with them.
Commissioner Malley?
Just real quick. Great work on the grant. So forgetting that for a second, the initial 25 that we put up that got us into the 10-year plan. Wasn't it like 2030 or something like that? And then Hurricane Helene in East Tennessee, that the infrastructure interstates just fell apart? Didn't that also delay it and moved it to 2031?
No, I didn't see any projects get delayed because of that. I guess they, they found federal money to, to help them.
Good. Okay. Great work.
Commissioner Hefner?
Yeah, don't, my frustration is not with you, Matt. And you have done a fantastic job, as I said in the beginning of the meeting. I appreciate all the hard work you and staff have done on this. My frustration lies with TDOT. And I'm not going to go in and start saying anything bad about TDOT, but it's frustrating that we have, we have to pay money to a state agency just to get them to pay attention to us. That's my first, that is my frustration. So it's not with you. I just wanted to make that clear. That's my fresh, that is my frustration. So it's not with you. I just wanted to make that clear. It's not with you. Trust me.
Yeah. From TDOT's perspective, they have about a thousand projects that they need to get done. And the tenure plan has about a hundred. So there's nine hundred projects out there that aren't funded right now. So you got this many projects and this amount of funding. Uh, so they're asking cities and counties, what do you, what could you offer to get this in the plan?
It just doesn't feel.
I know.
It just doesn't feel good to me. It's like you're sitting in a meeting. Yeah, you want to fast track, give me some more money. That just, and I get it. We got to do what we got to do, but it just.
Yeah.
Just doesn't, doesn't feel all right. But thank you again.
And these projects, I mean, that's what the money, their voluntary contribution, it's the Lebanon Road widening is the only project that this would apply for, apply to these developments because they're in that area of Lebanon Road. There's no other projects to put that money towards. So might as well use it.
Got a question. For this, uh, big, beautiful build project, uh, are we in a spot and we don't, are we on target to be able to pivot from our portion, what we are obligated to do to be ready for the twenty twenty-nine date?
It's going to be, it's going to be tough, but I, I think it's doable to get it ready by twenty twenty-nine.
All right. Mr. Giles?
Just last, but at least I want to thank y'all too. We get to do that in BPAC. So they're used to hearing us thanking them for the updates and stuff, but, but thank you all again for what you do on trying to get this stuff, the grants.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So as far as the resolution next meeting, do you want me to put in there three million? Or what's kind of the consistent consensus among you guys of what we would contribute towards Lebanon Road?
I'm fine with three and we can always amend it if someone's got a.
We'll start there. No, it'll be. It'll be for construction. So it wouldn't even come out till twenty thirty-five.
I think if you look at this, this list here, some of these lots haven't been probably constructed yet or even gone to construction. But, um, we probably have a few years to collect on that.
Yep.
All right. Well.
Thank you all.
If there's no objection, we will adjourn. Hearing no objections, we're adjourned.